How are we doing, Thomas?
Good, how are you?
Good afternoon and welcome to this public comment hearing here for the city of Brockton. Before we start, please rise and help us salute our beautiful flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, councilors and guests, welcome to this hearing. Before we begin, I'd like to utilize our legal counselor here just to kind of go over a couple rules and regs and basically explain as to why we're here today.
Tonight, we are conducting the public hearing that's required for state law for any zoning change. So tonight is just an opportunity for the public to speak and provide input on the proposed ordinance change. No action is taken by this body. We just open up the floor for people to speak in favor, people to speak against. And then, once that portion of the hearing is done, that portion of the hearing is closed. The ordinance itself is pending before the ordinance committee. The ordinance committee will need to have a meeting on that, and that's when any sort of changes or any amendments could be made. So none of that happens tonight. It's to listen to the public. And if you want me to expand on anything else, I can.
Thank you. Just a quick reminder, each individual that signed up will have three minutes to make his or her case. You will not hear comments from the council since there's nothing in front of us to be decided. We're here, just like a tape recorder, to basically record what you have to say. Has everybody that wants to be able to come up and say a couple words or a few words have signed up with the clerk? You have not, sir? Okay.
And there's still a sheet outside if anybody wants to put their name on it, or you can...
You can go ahead and approach and just put your name down so that we can make this process as smooth as possible.
All right. And I'll announce when you have 30 seconds left.
As we said, we'll give everybody 33 minutes.
I do. It's worth an eye, right?
Away, sir. Welcome.
I'll set your order.
All right, Mr. Clerk, the first name, please.
First name is Lisa Crowley. Please approach.
Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you very much for having us. My name is Lisa Crowley. I live at 250 Howard Street over in Brookfield. And I'm here to urge you to amend this overlay district to exclude all industrial uses as written in this proposal or severely limit and exclude any construction debris waste sites, trash and garbage transfer stations, tractor-trailer trucks, terminals, house demolition dumps, or any other heavy industrial uses, including some of those allowable in the I-1 zones. I would urge the council to stipulate innovation and science campus uses and what they are. If it's really an innovation campus, there should be no problem. This proposal calls for every industrial use imaginable from I-1 to I-4 and not the light industrial use being lobbied by its supporters. What are those light industrial uses? Anything can go in there. You need to stipulate what those uses are. So you need to change that, which I strongly urge this council to do. It's too general. It's too vague. The city planner said as much at the planning board meeting just recently. You'll effectively be allowing just about anything by right. There'll be a site plan review, but there will be no legal standing to protect the city and its residents and other businesses to do much of anything and prevent another Rainham Park and Ramova Park. I realize there's a lot of love and affection for the Carnies, but no city or town should allow this kind of zoning without any restrictions or protections or safeguards. It's too much, and this project is nothing but a paper project. It could go up in flames like the old city hall, and it would allow the Carnies to do anything. I hope that's not what they want to do, but it's the city council's duty to protect the city and its future. I urge the council to exclude all industrial uses and identify and stipulate what those light industrial uses are, what that innovation campus is going to look like. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person.
Veronica Stevens.
Thank you, councilors. Veronica Stevens, 32 Green Place, Brockton. I am not in a butter to the fairgrounds, but I am a resident to Brockton. There's a lot wrong with the way things are going, but we need not to eliminate the offices that are doing the checks and balances. This ordinance takes away the oversight that's necessary. We have Planning Department, Building Department, City Engineering, Water Department, Highway Departments, they have jobs. We have held other developers to those standards. Why would this developer be given a free rein to walk away with 65, 6.8 acres of Brockton prime real estate without those checks and balances? This is not fair to the residents. This is not fair to the other developments, and it's not fair to you to be asked to give somebody a free rein to do what they want. There's reasons for these safeguards. They are to protect the city, the residents. And I sincerely, sincerely hope that you take the opportunity to look at Rob Binns' letter to you, because I highlighted everywhere where he said, "This is not a good idea." Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Margaret Wilson.
Hi. I live at 394th Avenue, right across from the fairgrounds. When you tore down the stadium, I got infested with rats. And my husband, sorry, my husband and I are 77, and we can't afford an exterminator. What's going to happen when you tear down those five barns? They'll take over my house. And we're scared. I'm sorry, I don't mean to cry, but it's been hard on us trying to pay exterminator on our income. We just worry about it. We worry about what's going to happen when these barns are torn down. And also, I was told that the high school basement is infested with rats. That's not great for the kids that go to school there. So please, please do something before you tear them, those barns down. Okay? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Martin.
I'm at 517 West Elm Street, and I want to voice my opposition to the development. I don't have a lot of specific items to address, other than to say, I think we really need to consider public safety, public safety for homeowners who have been supporting Brockton all their lives. And I, the traffic is also another problem when you're going up West Street toward the mall or the highway on any given, any day, whether it's shopping time or the weekend, the traffic is tremendous, and this would overburden that even more. Property values would be affected, and I don't see it as having a positive overall effect. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Judith Perry.
Hello, my name is Judith Perry, and I live at 21 Levering Street, and I'm opposed to the fairgrounds being developed into a residential. I think that there's not a lot of spaces. Personally, I think in Brockton, I've grown up in Brockton my whole life. I remember going as a kid to the fair, and it was a nice piece of property. I understand that probably we need to build housing, but I didn't know whether or not there was other paths that might be beneficial, because that is very busy, that intersection, and I'm not that far away from that. It just seems like there's a lot of traffic all the time. So that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Laurie Mason.
Good evening, everyone. I kind of got caught up with a council member, and I'm still actually going to read what I want to say. I don't know a lot about the zoning, but I'm going to read what I wrote. You are calling this public meeting because there is a state law that requires you to call a public hearing to legally make zoning changes. While I oppose any zoning changes, why? Because I don't have the facts. Why? What? How are they making zoning changes? Zoning changes can be serious safety concerns and dangerous and are made sometimes just to line people's pockets. If you haven't voted on this project, why do you need to make zoning changes? As Susan Nacastro asked, and it was stated, that at this project, if this project is approved, the developer can do whatever they want to do. So this could be another situation, just like the sports complex. That never happened. So again, I adamantly oppose any and all zoning changes until I have the facts. I do want to say something. I listened to Monday's meeting, and Moses, I actually took offense to the way you spoke and the words that you used Monday night. And I, I think you need to go back and listen to it yourself. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Michael DeYoung.
Yeah, my name is Michael DeYoung, and I just want to assure you that even though there aren't that many people here tonight, there's a lot of people that know about this that can't be here for different reasons, but they know. And they're going to remember when it comes time to vote for you, whoever's up for election, they're going to remember. There's a lot of people that know about this that can't be here. So I just want to let you know that. What I'm worried about is this issue of free rein to do whatever the heck you want. I've heard rumors that they're going to put up a hotel for illegal aliens. What? Like we don't have enough of a problem already? Like property values in Brockton aren't already jeopardized? Do you think something like that is going to increase property values? You're going to use our taxpayer money to screw us and lower property values by bringing in more illegal aliens for a hotel so somebody can get rich? Like I said, there's a lot of people that can't make it tonight, but they know about this, and they're going to remember when it comes time to vote, I can assure you. That's pretty much all I want to say. And like I said, I hope that's not what you got in mind. Giving someone free rein to do what they want does not seem very rational or wise to me for people that call themselves leaders. Brockton's got enough problems already. We don't need more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ralph Smith.
Hi, I'm Ralph Smith, 194 Thurber Avenue in Brockton. Just want to echo some of the great posts by the previous speakers, tremendous. I want to talk more about the size of this project. I'm looking at it a little bit of a more technical aspect. I see a tremendous amount of issues over there with starting for access. I know the chief is, I don't know what the opinion is of the fire department, but I'm concerned about public safety, the access of the fairgrounds, the size of the development. As was previously stated, all of the zoning issues there, we have a far in excess of what they would normally be, by the fact that he doesn't have to go for variance, the fact that we are not declaring any zones, a multifamily zone. So basically, as they say, he has a free rein. Just for a couple of instances, the parking situation. They say there's 1,200 units of plus or minus of residential housing. In multifamily zones, they require two spaces per unit. If I came before the ZBA, they would be looking for two spaces per unit for even a small multifamily home. Also, I just saw a project in the city of Boston, a commercial district that abutted a residential district. In the city of Boston, they required one and a half spaces per unit. So that's, that's more than we are down in Brockton. That's going to be a huge issue. The other parking issue, office space, commercial space. You want one spot for 1,000 square feet, 1,000 square feet for one person? Do you know how many people can occupy 1,000 square feet, and there's only one parking space for them? The requirement in the city of Brockton is one per 300 square feet. So you're over three and a half times. The parking will be an issue. Public safety will be an issue. Lack of plowing the areas in the wintertime. Question will be then, where will people park? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen O'Brien.
I don't like the proposed rezoning. This rezoning looks like its intent is to provide a financial bonanza for the owner of the fairgrounds and the developer in disregard the rights of the residents of the area bordering the fairgrounds. The fairground zone should be residential only. No commercial or light industrial should be allowed. Seven stories is much too tall for proposed buildings. The maximum should be three stories or less. There should be more green space, and green space on the roofs of the buildings should not count. The fairgrounds is a residential area, and commercial or light industrial violates the rights of residents already living in the area. I propose an area made up of affordable and market-friendly individual houses. No multi-story building should be allowed. I also suggest one or more parks made up of green space. The plan should minimize any strain placed on existing water pipes or sewer pipes. My plan provides for housing which would help to alleviate the current housing shortage in the city and also respects the rights of longtime tax-paying residents of the area adjoining the fairgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cynthia Hodges.
I would like to say good evening to councilors. My name is Cynthia Hodges. I've been living in Ward 2 for over 20-something years. I am in full favor of redeveloping the Brockton fairgrounds. I think to bring new jobs, opportunity to our community, and the project represent a critic chance to revitalize an area that has been underused for a long time. Creating both economic growth and a space to innovation that would benefit all residents that lives in Ward 2 and around this surrounding area. I urge our city councilors to consider the long-term positive impact this redevelopment can have in our city to make the decision that prioritizes the future prosperities of Brockton. It is time to develop a project that will create meaningful opportunities to everyone. People here has no housing. You know, we are poor, and it's sad that some people moving out of Brockton. You need to think about the Brockton residents. I mean, looking at Ward 2, walking down, walking, riding, what do you, walking, riding, whatever. I mean, it's an eyesore. It would look, it got to look better if you, you know, redevelop it. So that's my point of view on it, and I think it would improve also infrastructure and a community space for people. They don't understand that everybody that's talking about it, it's a space for redevelopment, and I think you should consider that. I've been there 27 years, and you know, it's not, it's nothing that used to be the fair there, everybody knows that. But now, look at it. So if you have a developer, I feel, that wants to come in and redevelop that fairgrounds, I think it need to be done the proper way. Don't just say, "Okay, I got free reins." No. But I think if the council's put everything together and put it together, I think it can be done, and I think it be done the right way. That's my expressions on the Brockton fairgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go any further, is there someone here that would like to chime in and give their name to the clerk before we continue? So just approach to the side and provide the, anyone that wants to speak on for, against, or whichever might be your disposition. Okay, Mr. Clerk.
Dennis Ian Eary.
Last time I was here, council fellow told me to go home. His time was over, see? Now he doesn't even look at me and say hello. But anyhow, I'm here this evening because I felt that I had to be here, not only because I had service here, whatever, and I'm not here to have a, you know, contend with what I've been doing or what. Well, the body does change when you retire a little bit, but that's a different issue. But the thing that really caught my eye when I started hearing and reading about everything that was going to transpire at the fairgrounds, I looked at it as a prospective way of a person that lived within the neighborhood, lived, and also I was looking to what it could possibly do in the future, and that's naturally something that we all need. And I think all of you know who councilors and then some, that the one thing we're beginning to miss him right now is some monies, but I won't go that route. But I think it's time when we have to start to really look at some of these pieces of property, and that piece of property, which I look at, is people that have owned that property for many, 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 many moons, and I was on the different rides, and Mr. City, City Clerk, you were there too at some time. We were all there, and some others were as well. But it just delays me when I start to hear the same situation, when it becomes the issue, and people, again, I did serve counsel here for a long time, so I also know many times that people run into me and have something to say, want to give advice, and I don't say no. I don't. I probably, I think I know everybody in every Dunkin' Donuts shop right now, because that's where you meet some of the people. Sometimes it's good when councilors and ward councilors get out there and, you know, get a little bit, look what you can do in the, in the donut shop, and buy them a cup of coffee, and they think you're the greatest. So, but what I'm, what I'm aiming at is the fact that, you know, the Carnies have owned that property for so long. And when I hear people say that, "Well, we can't have it because of," and I wasn't listening to all the people that came up to what they were talking, a little bit, okay, rats, well, I mean, we won't go cats to kittens, because then we're in a different phrase. But anyway, I think, I just don't want to see something not be taken care of and not allowing them to even be able to do what they do and to bring revenue, but also bring people to what that's going to be there for the other people that could be moving in there. I just talked quickly to the development person, and he lived right here in the city of Brockton when he was a young kid. When you think of the fact that, you know, you're going to have, you know, you're going to have some larger, maybe condom type of thing, and you may have some smaller ones would justify for me, or even some other people my age that say, "This is great."
Three minutes.
You know? Am I done?
Yeah.
That's it.
Well, it's up to him.
Well, you always did that to me, but that's okay. I get to my point, and I, and I stand there, and whatever I can do, I'm going to continue to do work with the, with the Carney family and continue to work through it, because I think it's good. It's across the street from me, from, right from my, where I'm, where I'm living. So in all that being said, that's all. I just wanted to let you know that I'm here, I'm not gone for good, because I want to still put some, you know, yeses and get some things done in this city. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Nunes.
How are you doing? Thank you for having this meeting. I just want to say I am 100% for this project. Born and raised in Brockton, 33 years old. I think this right here is our, our white whale. Honestly, this will set a precedent for Belmont Street. It would be the hierarchy of 123. We have other cities and towns that repair highways locally, and after that, business has boomed. I don't think this will be any different since 123 has been extended. I hear the cons that some residents have, but I think the pros that we have for this will overtake every con that is, the rodents, easy solution for that. Traffic count is not that high, as people are saying. And with the 1,200 residents, I'm 100% certain they will sharpen the nearby markets, so give a business boost to whoever else is nearby as well. So it's always a plus. I'm really trying to see a con, but I can't. I, I think we, this is the white whale. I think it's time we hop on it. I mean, if it was up to me and I had the funds, I'll fly the developer in a helicopter to Belmont Street. So I think we should get this done. Please, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Thomasy.
Hi, I'm Susan Thomas, Brockton for about 40 years, in Ward 3, about a mile from the fairgrounds. I'm not going to say much different than other people have already said. I listened to the planning board meeting, and I'm sort of appalled that they sort of seemed to give carte blanche to this without any guardrails, and I'm hoping the city council can be a little more careful about it, not against developing the fairgrounds. It definitely needs to be developed. It needs, we need housing. We need the tax dollars. But the density of the plan and the commercial use... But the density of the plan and the commercial use and the lack of parking blows me away. Everybody knows that to be able to afford to rent or even buy a condo anywhere, you have to have more than like two people living there, and they both have to have jobs. One car per unit is never going to fly. The commercial parking, as the other person said, 1,000 square feet for one car is just really inadequate. The parking's going to be a real problem. They can build things like this in the city of Boston because they have mass transit. We don't really have transportation. People are going to need cars. The congestion around the fairgrounds will be horrendous if this gets built the way they're And as it is now, people that go to work every day, that live in that area, that access 24, nobody drives on those streets because they're so congested. I just can't imagine all that housing going in there. Yes, we need housing, but it needs to be better planned than what the plan is now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ulysses Verella.
Thank you. I am, I live on 81 Kennelworth Ave. in Brockton. I've been in that neighborhood for roughly 35 years, and I've, like all of you, I've seen Brockton change. And for me, this issue, it's really about a quality of life issue. And I will say, I'm for development, but the way that the ordinance is written for the Soverly District, I think, I think Rob May summed it up best when he said it's untargeted, unfocused, and too vague. To really give somebody free rein to develop that area, I think is, that's not good oversight on our part. I want Brockton to prosper. Like I said, I've been in Brockton my whole life, and I've seen the change. And to me, this is more a call of awakening for residents to be part of this process, you know? I wish more people showed up and advocated how they feel. You know, I'm, you know, it's in my backyard, but, you know, I do think about the residents on the other side, other sides of Brockton, the east side, the south side, the north side. I think about those residences as well, and I want their quality of life to be just as good as mine, if not better. And we need to really work collaboratively to come up with solutions to, to really help people's lives in Brockton. I have, you know, I live on it, like I said, I live on that neighborhood. Traffic is one of those concerns. Adding 1,200 residential units, I don't think is going to help my situation or other neighbors' situation in the area. With adding, with a large, large-scale development, what is that going to do to police response times? Our school systems, you know, classroom sizes, like all these little quality of life issues. 64 acres of development, and we've only designated three areas. Granted, it's only, I understand it's a plan, but only three acres of green space. I sit on, I sit on the Parks and Recreation Committee as a commissioner I've done for the past seven years. Beautiful DW Field Park, 700 acres, you know, I know what that does, you know, green space does for a community. And if you know the history of the fairgrounds and how the community was so connected, to not have their input in this process, like I said, that's a failure on our part to do what's best for the citizens. So I would just urge everyone, you know, who sits on the council, who this decision is, you know, before them, to really think hard in how we can come up with a good solution for the residents of Brockton. And thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's everyone I have, unless somebody came in late and would like to speak.
That's everybody I have. Well, folks, as we said in the beginning, this is a public hearing for us to hear the public and see what the public has to say. The items in front of the ordinance committee, and we're going to continue to work on it, and I saw, looking, looking to my left and my right, I saw everybody writing some stuff down, so I'm sure some of your comments will be taken severely and seriously as we move forward on this particular process. But we're going to do what's best for Brockton and the residents of Brockton, and just please keep that in mind, that we are, we work for the public. The public puts us here, and the public can remove us, but we're here to do what we think is best for our community and our city. Hearing, absolutely nothing else from anybody. We're not allowed, we are going to adjourn this public hearing.
Thank you.
Mr. President.